Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you
John Baker.
...to the regularly scheduled City Commission meeting. Even though we have a little rain, it's a beautiful day in Tallahassee. We do have a full agenda, so we are going to go ahead and get started. It is Ash Wednesday, and to provide the invocation, I'd like to invite Reverend Steen, who is with the Presbyterian University Center, known as U-Kirk, that services our collegiate ministries here on campus, to give the invocation. If you'll please stand and join me. Sheldon, thanks for being with us.
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, will you join me in prayer? God have grace, we are thankful for this day and this opportunity to gather together, to let our voices be heard, and to serve our neighbors as ourselves. We do, especially on this day, as many Christians around the world celebrate Ash Wednesday, we especially remember the power of communal lament. We lament the things that are broken in the world, in our country, in our city, in our neighborhoods, in our families, and even in our own lives. We pray that this would be a time where we are able to come together with a common vision for the common good. God unite us in purpose, unite us in vision, that we might find ways to serve one another, and remember especially those whom Jesus called "the least of these." We pray all this. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reverend Steen, thank you once again. I know it's Ash Wednesday, and you are probably quite busy, but thank you for taking the time out and come give the invocation today. Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We've added item 13.8 to your agenda.
And what exactly is item 13.8?
It involves the donation of a trained canine, otherwise known as a bloodhound,
Bloodhound.
...to the Tallahassee Police Department. That's been added to the end of the policy section.
Will said bloodhound be joining us for the evening tonight for formal acceptance?
I do not believe so, sir.
Okay.
No, sir, but he'll be following you home.
There you go. Any comments on the matter, the addition to the agenda? Seeing none. Under presentations, we have one presentation for the evening. It's a wonderful presentation, excuse me, in regards to the Riley House Museum. However, we are going to move this presentation until 5:15. We are going to have a reception in the foyer right after the presentation, but not everybody from the Riley House could join us at this time. So to make sure that everybody is here, we're just going to modify the agenda a little bit, and at 5:15, we will stop where we are with the agenda and go straight toward the presentation. Any questions, colleagues, on that? And thank you for your flexibility. Under announcements, Ms. Jackson, do you have a special announcement for us?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. I would ask that Mr. Jim Floyd from my office please stand.
Where's Jim?
All right, Jim.
So Jim recently received on February 8th the Civility Lawyer of the Year Award from the American Board of Trial Advocates, and we are very proud of Jim. We're very proud of the work that he does for the City Attorney's Office. He is a longtime employee with the office. He's worked for the city for over 20 years. He's given wonderful legal advice. He's worked hand-in-hand with our risk manager, Gail Shuffler, and provided excellent advice to her, and he oversees, in addition to carrying a full caseload, he oversees the litigation section in my office. The organization itself is about the promotion of civility in the civil justice system, and it requires that all of its members model integrity, ethics, and civility. So we are so proud of Jim and the receipt of this award.
Jim, I want to personally thank you as well. I am familiar with the work that you do in our office, and thank you. You set the example. I mean, this commission has tried to set the example as well, in terms of civility and ethics, and you lead by example. And I do note that your entire team is here to support you as well, Jim. So, yeah, yeah. Congratulations. Thank you so much. All right, moving right along. Do we have any other announcements, Mr. Manager?
No, sir, we do not.
Excellent. We'll come back to the presentation of the proclamation. We are now on citizen input on agenda items. If you do not think you will be able to stay for an agenda item that will be coming before us, you have the opportunity to speak now. Jim, I think this is a perfect segue into how I like to always start our meetings and start this section of citizen input of, hey, let's all set the example of civility in how we conduct the business before the City of Tallahassee, not only for those, to set the example for those that are here, but those that are watching us on television as well. So with that, Mr. Clark, do we have any speakers on agended items that would like to speak now?
Mayor, we do not. We have several speakers, but none who wish to speak at this time, and most, as a matter of fact, will be at our unagended portion.
Excellent. All righty, moving right along. We are at, do we have any appearances by appointed boards, committees, or other governments, Mr. Manager?
No, sir, we do not.
All right, we are on the consent agenda.
Move consent, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We are on section number 11, 11.01. Mr. Cook?
Yes, Mayor. Item 11.01 is municipal code enforcement board appointments. We have two positions, seats five and six on that board. The names and the information are in the agenda item. They are here for the approval of the City Commission.
Excellent. Do we have any speakers on this item?
We do not have speakers.
All right, colleagues, any questions? Commissioner Matlow?
I just want to thank the candidates for their participation as a former code board employee or board member. I know it's a thankless task to do, so we appreciate their involvement, and I'd make a motion to accept.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment?
Yes.
Sure, Dr. Bryant, Commissioner Bryant.
I'd like to point out, as we have attempted to fill seats on all of our boards, that we want it to be representative of our community. We've had two opportunities here. I think we have one white and one Asian, and we want to make sure, I know, I don't know how the process actually works in terms of recommendations or whatever, what the criteria is or is not, but I do want us, not just for this board, but for every board as they, we actually fill vacancies, that we remain cognizant of what we're committed to.
Absolutely.
Mayor, may I make a comment there?
Great point. Yes, sir.
Just for information for each of you, but more importantly, maybe the public who's here or watching, citizens can apply for board positions, and they can do that online at TalGov. You can get there and submit your application online. At this point, we're obviously filling these two seats. The city has a number of boards, and each of you know people who serve on them, but citizens don't necessarily have to wait. If they apply online, we keep that application on file for, I believe it's, two years, and so that if there is an opening on a given board, that one will be considered with any others that come in at that time. So just encourage citizens to apply and participate, and if you, as commissioners, know individuals who are well-suited to particular boards, you can always encourage them to do so online, and that way, we may have a pool of applicants instead of having to fill one as it comes open.
Excellent. Seeing no further comment, motion's been properly made for staff recommendation by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney, do we have any introduction of ordinances this evening?
No, we do not.
We're on policy formation and direction, 13.01. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Item 13.01 involves our tempo program, one that we're very proud of, and clearly you have supported, and a lot of energy and effort has gone into it. I'd like to invite Dr. Kimball Thomas, our Director of Community Services for, we all know him as the spirit behind the program. It's been very successful. He and his staff are in City Hall currently. We have been looking for space outside of City Hall that would be better suited for the program that he oversees, and I'd like to have him give us a summary of the requests tonight.
Great. Dr. Thomas can say, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Manager Go, respective Commissioners, or the appointed officials at the dais. Per your packet, the information in 13.01, as City Manager Go has pointed out, this gives us an opportunity to be the community-based program that we designed the program to be, to be in the heartbeat of where those census tracts are, to give case management. Our case managers are here to give them an opportunity to have those appointments, to talk to general and specific confidentiality with our cases. It gives us an opportunity to continue this program, to do those wraparound services that we talked about doing for the program. Yet this office would be doing it on a small scale, but at the same time, we can do things with respect to talk about conflict resolution issues, financial literacy, civic and governance, as we would like to. We'll have PCs there for them to do financial registration into college enrollment and job opportunities, and also register to vote. We'll talk to them about real issues and conduct mentoring and tutoring services that we haven't been able to do from a mobile office as we've been in for the last couple of months. But we really appreciate having this opportunity to be in the community, this community, these census tracts, 10.01, South City, 10.02, the Jack McLean area, but at the same time, Deputy City Manager Barbara pointed out to me that the other census tracts will continue as to this one, 11.01, Bond, 11.02, Jake Gaither, and also 19.01, Liberty Park, Providence, and Callan communities, they all still shop in that census tract, at the Piggly Wiggly, and also to save a lot. So we'll have a lot of foot traffic. We'll start our one-on-one case management. So I just want to thank you again. You can see we did an update from our January 15th retreat with respect to what those numbers are. We've got an additional 50 participants in the program, and I want to thank you for your commitment and sustainability of this program. And I want to show you a brief example of that sustainability and commitment that this program has from you. You may remember Cassie Hayes. She's the 2018 first graduate of the program, the one I found at the vegetable market. I want you to know this program, because of your commitment and sustainability of the program, not only has we impacted Cassie, but now she has a younger sibling in the program named Nicole, and also an older sibling named R.E.S., and R.E.S. graduated with her GED as of this week, and a brother named Thomas, who's one test away from graduating with his GED. So this program, because of your commitment and sustainability, is changing and transforming entire households and families. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, do we have any speakers on this item?
We have no speakers on 13.01.
Okay. Colleagues, questions, comments? Commissioner Bryant?
I want to move staff recommendation option one.
Staff recommendation's been properly moved by Dr. Bryant, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. 13.02, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Item 13.02 involves the work toward our Clean Energy Plan. You'll recall this time last year, you were very bold and aggressive and committed the City of Tallahassee to move to a Clean Energy Plan by 2050, along with major milestones in between. As we've made progress already, a big piece of moving forward is to have a plan in place which includes community engagement. I'd like to invite our Assistant General Manager of Electric and Gas, David Burnford. Very brief summary, but I wanted to recognize David and his team, they've been at the tip of the sphere. They're taking us into the future, and we're consistently leaders among others in our industry, and David has been a big part of that. David, will you give us a summary of where we are?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Commissioners, pleased to be here tonight. As the manager introduced it, we have, back in February of last year, this commission approved a resolution to bring the City of Tallahassee to 100% clean energy by 2050 with, as the manager said, with some interim steps, including things like bringing all electric vehicles in the city's light duty fleet, expanding Clean Energy outside of just the electric utility, and some more, bringing a lot of public engagement process into our project also. So with that, and major tenet of it being to have a consultant onboard to help us with the process of developing an integrated plan, community engagement, and a community-wide expansion of Clean Energy. We entered an RFP process earlier, or late last year, and our selection committee has made a recommendation, which we're bringing to you tonight. The recommendation tonight is that you approve the ranking from the selection committee, authorize the staff to negotiate a contract with the top-ranked vendor, which is named as GDS Associates, and to authorize the City Manager to execute that contract once it's complete as well. We'd like to recommend that if we're unable to reach an agreement with the top-ranked vendor, that we're able to reach down to the second-ranked vendor and attempt to negotiate with that one. Once an agreement is executed, we wanted to point out that we've got an initial piece of business we want to complete, and that is to accomplish an initial public engagement process. So bring some stakeholders together and start to get some input towards what needs to be part of this community-wide Clean Energy Plan, and we'd hope to complete that before the end of this year. Any questions?
Quick question before we go to public comment. Was there any problems with the RFP process?
Well, this was a reissue of an RFP that was issued earlier last year.
Right.
It was a protest. The City Attorney recommended that we reissue, and we did. There were no problems
Okay.
...with the second RFP.
Great. Mr. Cook, do we have any comments on this?
We do have one speaker on this item there, that's Steve Bean.
Okay. Hey, Steve, good to see you. Name and address for the record, please.
Steve Bean, 1101 Pines Street. I think I speak for many Tallahasseans in saying we're delighted that this process has gotten to this point. I want to remind you that when you passed the resolution a year ago, you had the foresight to say, not only are we going to get off fossil fuels by 2050, but we're going to hire a consultant who will study the possibility of doing it quicker. And the RFP clearly addresses that, and that's going to be part of the process. In the year that's gone by since then, it seems every few months, scientists come out with another report, making it even clearer how urgent it is that the world take action on this. We don't control the world, but we in Tallahassee can do our part and set an example for everyone else, and I'm glad to see we're doing that. We're looking forward to participating in the process, the public engagement process, and I just thank you for all you're doing.
Hey, thank you so much for your comments. Any other public comment?
No, sir.
All right, Mr. Clark, turn it over to my colleagues. Questions, comments, statements, motions?
Move acceptance of staff recommendation.
Second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded, staff recommendation's been seconded by Commissioner Richardson, seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 13.03, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to invite our Procurement Director for, Ms. Veronica McCracken. She's going to give us a summary. I'll tee the issue up. You took the issue regarding our MWSBE practices and policies up as part of your joint Blueprint IA meeting. This item is a formalization in city policy of that. It clearly raises the profile, it raises the bar as it relates to encouraging participation of our minority women and small business-owned enterprises. Veronica is going to give us a summary, but she's joined by our Deputy Director of OEV, Darryl Jones. We work hand-in-glove. Clearly, OEV sits between the city and the county, but there's a strong relationship, and we're certainly looking forward to good success. So Veronica, will you give us a summary of the action tonight, please?
Sure. As you all are aware, last month, the Blueprint IA adopted the MWSBE policy, and the, thank you, and yesterday, as a matter of fact, the county adopted the same policy, and we're the last leg of the trio in terms of being able to provide uniformity and consistency in the evaluation of proposals that come through. Specifically, there are, I think, three points that I want to emphasize. One is that we now have new established aspirational goals associated with MWSBE. Secondarily, the OEV will evaluate MWSBE for responsiveness, and as a result, the respective purchasing agencies will review their manuals and determine whether or not vendors will be responsive to solicitations. And lastly, the thing that I want to emphasize is that they have expanded the pool of MWSBE certification. So they will be accepting and adopting the recognition of the State of Florida Office of Supplier Diversity. So those are the three key points that I want to put forth. I don't know if Darryl is here, if he has anything that he wants to add, but we're asking your approval in measure to, like I said, fulfill the last plank of the three agencies.
Excellent. Thank you. Any speakers on this item?
We have no speakers on this item.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Veronica. A pleasure meeting you. I've heard about you. I'm glad that we have an opportunity to finally meet you. This is excellent. We're marching together in the right direction. Two things that I would ask, and I'm looking at my brother Darryl right here as well, the two things that I would ask is that we have a schedule of workshop, and you may already have this planned, so that to introduce the community to what we're doing, and also have training for entrepreneurs who will participate in this program, because I understand that there's, and I like this, there's a very stringent requirement that if they are non-responsive, then that's it. There's no more, no more applications that will come before us with no minority participation. So we need to make sure that that's loud and clear, so that, you know, people know going in that you must respond. No more passes on not responding. So I think we need, we owe it to the community and to those individuals who will participate to know that, as well as the other things that will be required. So I know you're already on that. I just wanted to say it out loud for the people who may be watching who don't know you're already on it, that this is coming, so.
Agreed. We have spoken at length about making sure that at pre-bid conferences, there is a training, there is an understanding. As you know, this, if approved, it will become effective April 1st. So in that time is a good education period for folks to understand the significance of what this means.
Very good.
Great. Mr. Mayor? Commissioner Richardson, then Commissioner Bryant.
Just a couple of things very quickly. I'm glad to see this day come. I remember, Darryl, I guess it was two years ago that we started the disparity study, and of course, we had to have that to legally justify our program, but now we're at this point, and I agree with the Mayor Pro Tem, that the community needs to be well-aware, so that nobody can say that they didn't have the information, or it wasn't clear what the requirements of the program are. The other question that I had, and if you could just address it briefly, is the whole issue of good faith effort, and how that will be addressed now going forward, because I know that has been kind of an issue of contention at some points in time as well.
And I'll let Darryl speak to that, but I know we have identified certain planks that they have to meet in order to address that.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Constitutional Officers, in response to your question, now no longer will we accept a single method of response. Now we have a criteria, we have 10 options, and at least five of those options must be met to qualify for good faith. We've also, as you'll recall in our presentation, we now also provide points for both, a combination of good faith and utilization as well. So that, and in both of those situations, utilization, qualified good faith will deem a bid respondent responsive. And if I may also address your point, Commissioner Cox, we have a plan of engagement with a great number of our partners, both, most specifically, professional associations for which those trades are associated. We're going out to their meetings, their quarterly meetings. We're also engaging our chambers. Capitol City Chambers having its annual meeting, we'll be one of the speakers there. We'll also participate with Big Ben Minority Chamber and the Tallahassee Chamber, making certain that all of those constituent groups are aware of our brand-new policy, as well as communicating it through these three, the three principal jurisdictions and their websites, and working with their PIOs.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Dr. Bryant?
Yes, and I don't know Darryl or either one. Could you tell me if the Citizens Advisory Committee has been formed?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Matter of fact, one of the members of the, as you recall, when we organized the Citizens Advisory Committee, there are appointees from the city, the county, and all three chambers. The three citizens who represent the City of Tallahassee include Bernard Williams, Wayne Mayo, and Gallup Franklin. And we have one seat that is vacant, that is presently vacant, and we have an application on file currently from Keith Bowers of the Family Small Business Development Center.
Very good. Awesome.
Seeing no further comment, staff recommendation's been made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Veronica, thank you very much for the presentation. 13.04, Mr. City Manager.
The City Attorney will.
Madam Attorney, my, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So item number 13.04 requests approval of resolution numbers 20-R-04, 20-R-06, 20-R-07, and 20-R-08, authorizing eminent domain action for the construction of Phases 1 and 4 of the Magnolia Drive Trail Project. The Magnolia Drive Trail Project consists of several phases from South Adams Street to Appalachia Parkway. Several phases of the project require the acquisition of private property. The construction of the next segment of the project will extend from South Monroe Street to Pontiac Drive and is expected to begin in spring of 2020. This segment of the project includes property acquisitions within Phase 4 and Phase 1 of permanent electric easements for the undergrounding of electric utilities along the trail. Thus, to maintain the current construction schedule, this agenda item requests approval of condemnation resolutions to acquire title to four parcels, one in Phase 4 and three in Phase 1.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, do we have any speakers?
We do not.
Okay. Let's move to commission discussion. Seeing no discussion, Mayor Pro Tem properly moves.
Thank you.
Staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. 13.05, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves the city's recycling services contract. You discussed this previously in January. With your direction, staff has worked with Marpan, our provider, on a final transition agreement that allows the city and our partner, Leon County, to identify a sustainable long-term solution to recycling, sorting, and processing in our community. Staff recommends your approval of the amended agreement with Marpan, and also an updated rate structure for solid waste fees. Robert Wigan, our Director of Resource Management, will provide a summary. He's joined by our General Manager of Community Beautification and Waste Management, Reginald Fani. They've worked closely together, and I'd like Robert to summarize the issue for us. Robert, good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Commissioners, appointed officials. I would add some details to what City Manager updated you with. The Marpan contract has been renegotiated. It reflects a February 1st to January 31st amendment, so that for that 11-month period, it ensures that we continue processing recyclable materials in the current market. We've asked for an additional eight months, totally at our discretion, to add on to that contract for a longer-term option. If you'll remember, since our discussion, January 29th, we're engaged with the county under contract to study the issue, to study the market, study the needs of the community, and then what we would do henceforth as the city and county as partners. So on the short term, we've got 11 months to have Marpan cover our recycling needs, and then make a longer-term decision after the contract. The rate resolution that you have before you provides a short-term means to address that cost increase in the contract. We're recommending a dollar per month per resident increase. That will allow us, within the solid waste fund, to keep that money in that fund, address any short-term contracts with Leon County, new contract with Marpan, and then planning for the future as we get the results of the study back with Leon County. As you'll notice on our rate chart, we looked at residential service, curbside solid waste rates. That dollar impact moves us from fifth lowest in the 20 comparable solid waste providers to sixth lowest in the comparable solid waste providers. We have gotten quite a bit of feedback that the dollar is something that's very acceptable to our community to continue recycling. We also looked at our commercial customers, as seen in that commercial customer chart. For our dumpster service, the 35 cents per pickup keeps us as the lowest provider in that same 20 provider service territory. Again, as I mentioned before, long-term, the revenue will remain in the solid waste fund, and as we make those long-term decisions to finalize markets and approaches to recycling, we'll be able to be responsive to those needs. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Any questions for Robert? Go ahead, Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, first off, thank you for the presentation, and I just want to affirm, I think our community really values recycling, and we need to, we're in a tough situation in how we chart a path for. and we need to, we're in a tough situation in how we, we chart a path forward. Um, I did have a, a few concerns, um, uh, how quickly we go to raising rates on our, our end consumers. Are we able to tell the financial impact of just the Marpan increase versus what we may be putting away for a future facility or that sort of thing?
Um, we, we can determine that based on what the 11-month extension of the contract, uh, necessitates, that this dollar and 35 cents being in place should cover those costs. We're less certain, uh, for the future. But we, we feel pretty confident that what we put in place for an eight, eight-month period in this fiscal year will cover our contract with Marpan. Uh, we'll have a 12-month period thereafter, uh, as we get the results of the study back and have some interim decisions to make between balancing Marpan and whether or not we step into that, into that void and, and do the, the recycling ourselves.
Follow-up?
Yeah, I'll just rephrase that. Um, do we, do we know the direct dollar amount impact of just the recycling increase? Everything else aside, just what we approved from the Marpan increase? We take a baseline from last year of how much we recycled, how much is that actually increasing citywide?
Sure. So, we're looking at, uh, about a $750,000 increase for our residential customers in this, uh, in a year's period of time. So, we would be looking at about a $500,000 increase, uh, rate, uh, revenue realization in this time period.
Okay. Uh, on the rate increase, I, I guess I'm, I'm asking the actual recycling costs, specifically how much more we're gonna pay to Marpan versus what we paid them.
Yes.
Robert, look, I, I believe, if I recall, and you correct me, I believe the estimated increase over this time last year is in the neighborhood of $600,000. That makes market assumptions, we don't know what the market's gonna do, cause that hasn't influenced the value of the materials, but if, if I recall correctly, it was in that order of magnitude of $600,000. Again, that assumes, that's the known processing cost, but you don't know how much the, the value of, of the materials would be.
Right, yeah. I, I understand that. Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I mean, I just, I'm, I'm afraid, I'm 100% dedicated to if we need to build a recycling facility, if we need to move to dual stream, if we need to truck stuff off, figuring out what we need to do, exactly what that costs and making it happen for our community. I'm, I'm just hesitant to raise a rate. I think if, if 600,000 is our estimated cost for, to get us through this year, I think that would be a more appropriate, let's get through this year. We have a consultant coming on with a plan, and when we actually have the plan that we can bring to the community and say, "We're gonna build this facility, or we're gonna do this," and it's gonna cost a dollar extra per person, I think it'll be more appropriate at that time, so the community knows we're not just raising their rates, um, be, because we can. We have a very real concern, uh, and we need to address it, but I don't wanna ask them for more money than we need to address the immediate concern, and would prefer that we, we do a stopgap ma, a stopgap measure for the next year and then readdress it at the end of that year when we have a real plan. Thank you.
Do we have any comments from the public on this issue? Mr. Clerk?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we do have one, um, I'm sorry, no, we have a speaker on 13.06, so no, we do not.
Alrighty. Colleagues, questions, comments? Seeing none, the mayor pro tem moves staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Passes 4-1 with Commissioner Matlow, uh, against. 13.06, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Commissioners, um, I'll ask Christian Doolin, our Director of Strategic Innovation, to give us a legislative update. He's been updating, uh, you, and he's provided a couple of updates during this, uh, session. He has our, uh, state-level lobbyists with him. I'd like him to introduce Kirk as well, uh, and just give us, uh, uh, the most recent, uh, events across the street from our friends at the legislature.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, Appointed, um, middle of the week, seven of the nine-week session. Uh, quick intro before turning it over to Kirk. So, our team focus remains tracking the bills and initiatives that will impact our community's priorities. Chief among those, as you know, potential first raise for state workers since 2007. That'll be the second in 13 years. Um, so that 3% that's currently sitting in the Senate could represent nearly $75 million for our, uh, local residents. I mean, that's really, really big. In appropriations world, um, right now, two of our initial three requests are still in. Tempo's, uh, appropriations request is funded in the House at $100,000. And the pump station, um, appropriations request, that's for a 26-year-old, uh, pump station that services about 25% of our system, that's fully funded in the Senate for 700 and, uh, I wanna say $750,000. So, um, as we move into this weekend and the conference, that'll be, uh, we'll, we'll remain engaged on those. Our team's with me today. I'm gonna introduce Kirk Pepper, and he'll give an overview of the session in general and maybe a little bit about the work we've been doing to support your legislative priorities.
Kirk, good to see you, man. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, guys. Um, and Mayor, Commissioners, and Officers, thank y'all for the time. Uh, thank you for the confidence that you've got in the Gray Robinson and DLA Consulting Team. We, uh, really enjoy and represent our hometown. So, sort of brief summary, uh, like Christian said, we're in week seven, um, so, uh, we're getting to the point where a lot of work's getting done and, uh, and a lot of work's falling off. Uh, we've been monitoring a lot of bills for the city and, and keeping in close touch with staff. For example, um, the type of monitoring that we're doing, we've been closely watching, uh, House Bill 7069 and Senate Bill 1512, which, um, the House version of this bill, right, has some local government kind of report card-style reporting, um, that, that we understand why you wouldn't love, uh, some of the requirements around that. The Senate bill, though, has got, uh, two committee references left, and we really only have about two or three more opportunities for those to be heard, so that, that bill's probably not gonna pass. And as those things happen, um, we, uh, we've been updating you guys pretty frequently. Preparations, uh, Christian, uh, alluded to this. We're, we're in, uh, the time where the work's about to really happen in appropriations. Uh, as we get towards the end of this week, I can tell you guys that, that the budget conference, um, process will not start this weekend. Um, House members have been, you know, told that they can go home. Uh, I think that, uh, the work of negotiating the overall budget amount between the Speaker and the Senate President will start in, um, in earnest this weekend. Uh, they're about a billion and a half dollars apart, that they need to close that gap to get to the same numbers. Senate's a little bit higher than the House is, but as we get that done, probably towards Thursday, Friday of this next week, then we'll have, um, the budget conference process where our goal is, um, to, at the very least, to try and get both of the appropriations that you guys still have in play, uh, fully appropriated in the final budget. The budget will be done, and we'll be able to tell you guys where we stand going into the veto period, um, Tuesday, 13 days from now. Uh, so, pretty firm deadlines. That's where we are. We will be in close contact with you guys throughout that process. Uh, you guys will probably hear from us a couple times a day during the budget conference, and, um, and we are here for any questions that you have or any information you need.
Wonderful. Thank you. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clerk?
We do have one speaker on this item, Mayor.
Excellent.
That is, uh, Dr. Hollifield.
Dr. Hollifield, good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, please, and if we could try to keep it around three minutes, that'd be great.
Looks like you would get tired of reminding me. Longleaf Court, Dr. Hollifield. Keep in mind, TMH gets money from federal, state, and local agencies. I've determined that the most corrupt relationship with the city is not with the CRA. It's really with TMH. They control a billion dollars' worth of assets for a dollar a year, a dollar a year. Mr. Mayor, how can that be justified? You gonna renew that contract, that dollar a year, racist contract with TMH? More than a million dollars a year to Mark O'Brien to run a de, de-rated hospital so far as public safety is concerned? A million dollars a year? And Mark O'Brien is not even a doctor. I'm board-certified in internal medicine and cardiology. I would run it for 250,000, and I could get better than a de-rating, I assure you. Hospital pays some janitors, cafeteria workers, and others less than $9 an hour? What you think about that, Curtis?
Dr. Hollifield, I, I would ask for your respect, okay?
Don't take this out of my three minutes. Just be quiet while I finish.
It's not, but respect begets respect, Dr. Hollifield.
Nine dollars an hour, disrespect. Curtis, you were the one who said that there's no poverty in Tallahassee. Do I get to finish, Mr. Mayor?
Of course, and I'm not gonna take your time on this one, but I'm trying to figure out how this ties into the item at hand, which is the legislative update.
I said they get money from all kinds of sources, state, Florida as well.
At three minutes, and we're gonna address this under items that are non-agenda, because just by the simple reference that they receive federal does not tie into our specific priorities that are being represented. We will start the clock over, but I'm gonna ask you to come back under non-agended items, please, sir.
Well, I would like you to show me the written policy in regard to that.
As the mayor, I have the authority, I do believe, to call something germane or not germane to what's being presented before us.
I think you assume more authority than you really have.
That is correct, Mayor.
Thank you. So, that is your legal opinion, sir, and I'm gonna please respectfully ask you, we will reset the clock, and we will give you a full three minutes on non-agended items. Thank you, Dr. Hollifield.
Again.
Dr. Hollifield, I'm asking you, please respectfully.
I am not gonna be harassed by multiple sources up here.
Not harassing you, sir.
I'm gonna take my three minutes, I don't need, I certainly don't need any other public commentary.
We are going to reset the clock for you under non-agended items, but we have a place on the agenda to address all issues of any concern for citizens. I am asking you, please respectfully, to come back at the end where we have non-agenda items.
Mr. Sims on the payroll, like anybody else.
Back into order, it's 4:45 after a quick recess. We are on item number 13.06. Are there any other speakers on 13.06, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have any further questions, discussion? Commissioner Richardson?
Just a couple of questions for our lobbyists, Mr. Mayor, and a couple of issues. Uh, one is, what is the status of the legislation that was moving through concerning the, the Airbnbs and the state preempting local control of?
Uh, still very much under negotiation, but, um, as a former legislator, the plane's getting pretty heavy, sir.
Yeah. Has, has, where is it in, it, it?
Uh, it's got a, uh, it's got, I believe, one committee left in the Senate, um, and, uh, significant policy differences between the chambers. And, uh, and I don't know if you saw it, but the governor, uh, weighed in publicly earlier this week and said he had some real concerns.
I saw that, okay. Um, and then where are we? I, I got a call from, uh, the Commissioner of Agriculture's office on yesterday, and apparently there's a, a hostile move to strip her department of the State Energy Office. Where is that at this point?
I, I think, um, again, I, I think there's, you know, one chamber that would like to make some of those changes. I think the other one right now is resisting. Um, it's very much gonna be one of the last week negotiated things. We'll see. Um, there's a couple of pieces that, that the good Commissioners are not totally thrilled with. But, you know, it's wrapped up into budget and policy and a lot of other things, so.
Okay. And colleagues, I'd let you all know that I, that, that her office called and asked, I guess they were trying to rally some support, uh, against that, uh, and I certainly lended, if that's correct, lended, loaned? I wanna be grammatically correct, uh, my support for her office to retain that energy office. It's been there, uh, and I, I don't really see any, uh, reason why it should be moved, uh, and I just see it as something that's, that's hostile and politically motivated, and so I was more than happy to lend my support to her efforts, uh, to beat it back.
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Any further comment? The action on table is just to simply accept the report, motion made by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. 13.07, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. This, this item normally would be on consent, but I wanted to bring it to your attention, given the general expense and, and share with you our approach. I'll ask our General Manager of, uh, Community Beautification and Waste Management, Reginald Fani, to come forward. Uh, this involves our right-of-way maintenance, uh, in how we approach it. We do use some contractual services, we use in-house services, and I think it'd be a good opportunity to share how we do it and, uh, ask for your approval to, to engage a contract, um, with a local firm moving forward.
Mr. Cook, do we have any speakers on this item?
We do not.
Okay. Commissioners, colleagues, questions, thoughts? Recommended action's been moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. 13.08, added to the agenda, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the last policy item. We added it, as you indicated, to the agenda for timeliness. We have an opportunity to accept the donation of a trained canine, as I mentioned earlier, bloodhound, uh, a, a very effective tool in, in the, the police function in, in finding either victims or, uh, using it in their investigative efforts. Our Deputy Chief, Jason Larson, is here to answer any questions. Uh, I'd like him to also recognize, uh, the folks that we'll be getting the donation from and the, the trainers as well. Uh, certainly a good community partnership in adding lots of value to Tallahassee. Uh, Deputy Chief, if you will?
Mayor, Commissioners, Appointed Officials, hey. We started using Scent Evidence Canine around 2018 to assist with some of our, uh, missing people, juveniles that were at risk, and also some other discriminatory scent tracking and trailing for some of our violent crimes cases. Uh, we've had great successes, uh, with that, and, uh, with that company, Paul Coley, uh, is a, a local individual who runs that company. He has offered, along with the Tallahassee Board of Realtors, uh, to provide a bloodhound, uh, to Tallahassee Police Department for utilization to find, uh, missing people, missing juveniles, uh, and those that are, that are at risk when they leave home, wander off, uh, those things. So, with that, we also have, uh, Dr. Helms from the Quincy Animal Hospital, who will provide a year's free care, uh, for the dog. And, um, we do have a, a tentative time, uh, for a ceremonial handover, uh, at the Tallahassee Board of Realtors on March 3rd. And that's what we're looking forward to, and I can answer any questions specifically in reference to the bloodhound, but it should assist us.
You didn't bring the dog.
I, I, I know.
You didn't bring the dog.
It's only 16, she, she does have a picture.
Deputy Chief, would please share the name of the dog? The dog does have a name.
Yep. The, the dog is named John John, uh, and it was after, uh, John John Hagens, who went missing in Jacksonville in 1968. And so, during the cer- ceremonial handover, uh, the Hagens family will be there also.
That's wonderful.
And this is being donated by, the, the dog's being donated by Tallahassee Board of Realtors?
It is.
How, how wonderful. That is, that's great. That's great. Yeah, if you got a photo, of course, absolutely. It's an adorable dog.
Did you know, when I think of bloodhounds, I always think about the one from, uh, Beverly Hillbillies.
The Beverly Hills?
There you go.
Hey, that dog won't hunt.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we do not have speakers on this item.
Great. Any, any comment, Commissioners? Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, it's very rare that we get to accept a gift, so I wanna, I wanna thank, uh, Paul Coley, Dr. Helms, and the Board of Realtors, and thank John John for, for the service. Uh, we look forward to it.
Great. Commissioner Matlow accepts the gift on behalf of City of Tallahassee.
Make sure you remember to report it.
Commissioner Bryant, Dr. Bryant, did you have something to add? Excellent. Commissioner Richardson? All right, um, the staff recommendation's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, uh, seconded by everyone. I will put Commissioner Matlow down as a second.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, seeing no further comment, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Mr. City Manager, do we have anything else to come before us under policy formation?
No, sir. That, that concludes the policy agenda.
Excellent. All right, colleagues, we are ahead of schedule, so here's what I propose. Um, we announced at the beginning of the meeting that we'd come back at about 5:15 to make sure that everybody has plenty of time to be here for the Riley House presentation, which will then flow right into our reception. We then have a public hearing scheduled at 6 o'clock, but I would like to go ahead and have public comment on unagended speakers now, and if we get through all the speakers and have time, we can go ahead and do the sharing of ideas and keep working through our agenda until it's time. So, with that, let us go ahead and move to unagended speakers. Mr. Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
We have five, Mayor. That would fit your timetable just about right.
Excellent, perfect. Our first speaker?
First is Stanley Sims, followed by Ernie Payne.
Great. Mr. Sims, it's good to see you, sir.
How you doing?
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. I'm here tonight, uh, for, uh, I'm here tonight for two reasons, Mayor. One is, I think that it is very important for the cities, the citizens of Tallahassee to know that the city administration did not have anything to do with why the ethics is not being televised. That was nothing of the city manager's doing nor the mayor's doing. And we have expressed that. I'm a part of common sense of the integrity thing. And I, there is supposed to be, Mayor, a letter being sent to you asking that we would love to stay into City Hall. We do understand that there are some challenges around that. But to lose the ability to be televised is not something that we are willing to give up for those other amenities. The other thing that, this clock bothers me. Ethics, ethics. Oh, here's what I want to tell you, Mayor. We are in the process of trying to, don't kill me, Dr. Hallifield, create a jobs program with TMH Foundation, too. Hopefully, hopefully, we've got Mr. Ron Sacks on board. I know people may see lobbyists in a negative light. Well, I'm going, I'm gathering all of the lobbyists together in order to make this job initiative work to go over into the purpose-built revitalization program over on Orange Avenue. And what we're doing, Mayor Pro Tem, and one day you're going to be so proud of me, we're asking TMH to give us a slither of their cleaning where we would create a community cleaners right into the purpose-built that will give fair wage jobs right there in that location. I've also talked to Ms. Brenda. She is very excited. The minimum person will make $12 an hour. And I don't know if you all remember, the lady used to do press time where she'd come, pick your clothes up. We've been working with the Downtown Improvement Authority, Commissioner Lane. Alan Thompson is, you know, offense mayor. He's the unofficial white mayor. I'm the unofficial black mayor. We're working together downtown, even with our vendors downtown. Nick Target is looking to partner with DYG to bringing young men to shine shoes and look nice. So we're on the ball, Mayor, but I did want to make sure that the public knew that the city manager or the mayor did not have anything to do with why the ethics board is not being televised. You owe me $5, Reese.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Next speaker is Harry Brown. I had said Ernie Payne, but he has a conflict at this particular moment, so Harry Brown will be our next speaker.
Okay. Mr. Brown? Good to see you, sir. Can you name and address for the record, please?
My name is Harry Brown. Hello. I'm here, and I reside at 5431 Trump Road, Tallahassee. I'm here to remind you of the growing disappointment in the handling of the Chief of Police Contract. There is growing disappointment in the entire commission with the exception of Mr. Matlow. Kudos to you, Mr. Matlow, for your spiritual discernment of the poor leadership of Reese Gold. And right here, I would just like to say, black woman in this treacherous land, stop a minute and take your black brother's hand. You threw this black brother under the bus when you handled him the way you handled him here. To have someone of Reese Gold's character managing the office of City Manager is despicable. He's not capable of managing the office in an ethical, moral, and respectable manner. It is obvious that the commission and the city manager are similar in thinking. If it were not so, you would never accept the way Reese Gold handled the Chief of Police Contract. The community was looking so forward to an improved style of leadership after most of the old leadership left. It looks as though we have a new group comparable to the old group. From my experiences with this government, I still see a new group of individuals who will accept anything. It looks as though we have a group with the follow-the-leader mentality. Reese Gold works for you all. You all don't work for Reese Gold. From what we see, you all are following Reese Gold thanks to standing for what's right and ethical, Mr. Matlow. You all have been hired to make a difference, not just to accept anything regardless of what your spiritual leader may say. Don't let this city fall deeper in moral decay and rot. I worked here for 20 years, Ms. Cox. I know the rot this city has. Ms. Cox, I worked in this putrid government for 20 years. I know rotten when I experienced it. You have not been here long enough to know half of what I know. It is a rotten, it is rotten to the core. I saw Scott Maddox lead this city into degradation. He engaged in name-calling. He constantly called me a liar. He wore a gun on the dais as he read from a three-page document of lies and innuendos. He ran this shop. Scott Maddox ran this shop.
You're at three minutes.
My three minutes are up?
Yes, sir.
You wrap up comments, Mr. Brown. That's great.
Okay. I won't go on with what I have written here, but what I will say is, this government is rotting within. And until you correct what's been going on in this government for over 50 years,
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
you'll never correct it.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Joseph Batavia.
Joseph, good to see you. Thanks for coming out. Your name and address for the record, please.
How y'all doing today?
Good to see you.
Really, it's awesome. My name is Joseph Batavia. But I want to tell you guys another thing on the record. My real name is Grisa Tokova of Russia. United States of America adopted me and my family a long time ago. I've been living in Florida for a very long time. You guys know what this is, right? The Constitution. You're from Miami, Mayor, right?
Born.
I got this in Miami. I lived there, but I traveled through down south all the way up here. I need to speak to y'all privately. I really do. But I didn't come here to talk about this. I came to congratulate a gentleman. I don't know if you guys heard the news. There was a, someone took a seeing-eye dog, German Shepherd from an African-American gentleman on the news recently. Well, there was. A team brings back a stolen service animal after a blind owner pleads for return. If I was blind, I want my service animal, even if it's in the backyard, protected because I can't see. A person coming in the backyard, taking a service animal from the backyard, that is their tool. But who is standing up and holding up those rights? I'm going to stand up. I'll lead with your support if it's possible. I've been here four years, since May 2017. The gentleman, I don't know his name. I can't remember the person before me. He's right. There's a lot of things going on in New York City. I'm from Broward. So if I see things down south, west side, east side, north side, this is the capital, Florida. You guys have high education. Let me ask you this. Raise your hand who has a college degree and a high school diploma in this room. Raise your hand. Seriously. Raise your hand who has a high school diploma and a college degree. Please. Everybody should be, besides me. But I know what's going on. I'm just an activist. But I want to keep going to develop something that's more for the people, for our future, for our children, for the grandchildren, whatever it is, because illness cannot be fixed. Unless there's some type of scientist could cure certain things, I'll be the first one lined up to ask to fix my body and my brain. But that's impossible. I function with my service animal. She's my partner. She's been serving with me for four years. And I want to make sure this doesn't happen to nobody else. You guys probably have kids. Hope to God this does not happen to your children or your friends' children or your neighbors' children. But if it does, those resources needs to be out here for us to function in society despite of the stuff going on. And that's all I want to say. Thank you very much. And another thing, it's a very honor to be with you guys because four years ago, I was involved in hit-and-run in the country. An officer said, "The way you were talking to them in the hospital, I wish you good luck. I'm not helping you." The Department of Justice is a very powerful organization in the United States of America. My father served under as well. I don't have capabilities. I just know what I can do. But I need you guys as my tools.
Thank you, Joseph. Thanks for coming out.
That's...
Our next speaker?
Next is Dr. Hallifield.
Dr. Hallifield, we will restart the clock. Three minutes for you, sir.
After what I've heard, I gotta change my whole speech. And, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remind you, you are not a king. You're a servant of the people. So just keep that in mind from time to time. Somebody mentioned TMH and Ron Sacks? Really? I mean, those are the people that really run this town. The Chamber, the Rose Hill aristocracy. They run this town. Don't forget, Ron Sacks tried to put a polluting balm-ass plant with them polluting particles a mile from Sable Palm Elementary School. Y'all remember that? Where them black children could breathe all that soot in the air that they were going to throw up into the air to benefit Virginia Weatherall, TK Weatherall, Innovation Park? You remember that, Diane? Balm-ass plants? How about you, Curtis? You remember it? Curtis, don't interrupt me anymore. But what I'm saying is, if you're relying on Ron Sacks and TMH, well, hell, TMH pays people $9 an hour. Some of them, those cafeteria workers, those transportation, $9 an hour. What you think about that, Mr. Mayor? It's your hospital, or should I say our hospital, since we own it? $9 an hour at TMH, cafeteria, transport, janitorial? And y'all talking about TMH being some kind of solution? Why they paid Mark O'Brien 1.2 million, including his bonus, for this derated hospital? Are you kidding? You think we're stupid, Mr. Mayor? Really and truly. $9 an hour. You can work full-time at TMH, full-time, and be on food stamps. You can work full-time at TMH and be on Medicaid. TMH creates poverty. Y'all read any of those community health assessments that come out of TMH? Read the one from 2013, where TMH proudly claimed, "We aren't concerned with poverty", and they put it in writing. "We aren't concerned with sexually transmitted diseases", and they put it in writing. TMH has no concern but their own pocketbooks. And then you got Sally Bradshaw on the board? Sally Bradshaw used to be the Chief of Staff for Jeb Bush. Executive order that wiped out affirmative action? You know what's happened since then? FSU enrollment now, you know what it is, Mr. Mayor? It's 8.6%. University of Florida, you know what black undergraduate enrollment is? University of Florida?
You're at three minutes.
6.4%. And that's thanks to Sally Bradshaw.
Dr. Hallifield, if you can help wrap up.
The executive chief of staff for Jeb Bush, and now she is on the board of TMH. What's she going to do on the board? Is she going to eliminate any affirmative action programs that are left at TMH? Is she going to get rid of them? Just like the State of Florida and Jeb Bush and Sally Bradshaw got rid of affirmative action right here in the State of Florida.
Thank you for joining us. Do we have any other public speakers?
We have one final speaker at this time, Mayor. That is Freddie Miller.
Great. As Mr. Miller's coming to the podium, it's good to see you, sir. Altamis, do we have everyone here for the Riley House? Excellent. Great. Mr. Miller, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Freddie Miller, 6001 Sharmouk Street, Tallahassee, Florida. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, Foyney. How y'all doing today? I'm here to the end of Black History Month, and we're coming to the end of it. And I'm hoping that just because the month run out, we don't stop celebrating the black history and all our heritage and accomplishments that we have achieved. I'm basically here to follow up on the Martin Luther King Day parade that I proposed last meeting, that everybody seemed to be on board with. But I hadn't heard anything concerning that matter. I left my information at the desk. So I'm concerned about what's going on. If I get an update, if there is any update to get on it, if there is anything that I can do to help this dream of mine become reality, I would like for, you know, guys just to let me know what all I need to do. I can pull up my sleeve and get to work. It's no problem. I got time and I got means and I got opportunity. So that's basically what I'm here for, to continue the accomplishment of our people and so we can get on board with basically duplicating some things that all the other cities in Florida are doing. And I'm kind of disappointed that Tallahassee's not doing it because we the capital, which I don't have to remind you of that. I mean, I'm not trying to be capital obvious, but we just want to try to get this thing going. So if any updates, any information I need to leave, any things that I need to know or anything that you all need me to do, just let me know.
Yes, sir.
That's basically, that's basically my spiel for the day.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Miller, we need you to be patient. It's been two weeks. And in two weeks, we're trying to take care of some major life-or-death situations. And as I told you, and you were at my program on Monday.
Yeah, which was a very beautiful program.
Thank you for coming. As I, we're going to get there. But of course, there are things that are high priority that we have to do, life and death. But as I said, we will, I promise you, give me more than two weeks, and we will reach out to you. We will reach out to others in the community, too, because we needed to be a community effort. And it's not like, as I said, it's not like we're not doing anything. We work with NAACP and other organizations every year to have a Martin Luther King Day celebration. We have not had a parade, but we've had a march, and we've had some other activities. And so, as I said to you, we are having conversations, we've had conversations about what to do next year. But please give us more than two weeks.
Well, the reason I was like on an urgent matter because I knew, you know, time is running out. Time is of essence. And I was hoping that we could get this accomplished by Martin Luther King Day Parade 2021.
Yes, sir. Which is a little over a month ago was Martin Luther King Day. So we have some time.
I think, I think we're all on the same page.[1710.22]
Yeah, we, just give us some time.
Okay, well, I'll check back with y'all.
Great.
I, I, hey, I tell you what.
2021.
I tell you what, we'll call you, okay? We'll call you, you don't have to call me, I'll call you. How about that?
There we go.
I don't know, okay, I'll go with that for a little while.
Okay.
That's great.
Y'all have a good evening.
Do we have any other speakers this evening?
No, sir.
All right, so, uh, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to do a presentation. I'm gonna ask all of my colleagues to come join me in just a second. After the presentation, uh, we will automatically go into a recess. I invite everyone to come join us out on the Mazin Letville for a reception. Uh, Commissioners, we will be back at six o'clock for the publicly scheduled, um, public hearing. So if you wouldn't mind, come and join me and I'd like to ask Altamis Barnes and all the members of the Riley House Board and all other friends of the Riley House that are here to come join us as well. We got a big crowd, it's good to see everybody. Come on, let me just get together. This is a very, very, very special day. And I'd like to read a proclamation and then I am going to turn the podium over to Ms. Barnes for comment. From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation, whereas John G. Riley was born into slavery in Leon County and following emancipation, rose to prominence as an educator and civic leader in the late 1800s, further distinguishing himself as a keen businessman and one of the few African Americans in Tallahassee to own property at the turn of the century. And whereas the Riley House was listed in the National Register of Historic Places in 1978 and is included on the Florida Black Heritage Trail, which recognizes important African American landmarks around the state. And whereas this historic home represents the thriving black neighborhood known as Smokey Hollow that once existed just east of downtown Tallahassee and is one of the last vestiges of the accomplishments of the black middle class that emerged in the latter part of the 19th century. And whereas the John G. Riley Center Museum was established in 1996 with the mission to discover, archive, and illuminate the blended interrelationship of African American, Native American, and European history and to preserve African American landmarks and legacies throughout the state of Florida as an enduring public resource through tourism and education. And whereas the museum welcomes visitors of all ages from near and far to learn about and gain an appreciation for the educational and social contributions of African Americans to Florida's history. And whereas through its research efforts, recollections of daily life and significant events have been memorialized through exhibits, books, historic markers, and much more. And whereas Altamis Barnes, a six-generation Tallahassee Leon County resident, has since, since its inception have been the driving force behind this center, working tirelessly to research, capture, preserve, and elevate the varied vibrant history of African Americans and of our community. And whereas to ensure the continued prosperity of this cultural and historical gem in perpetuity, it will henceforth be the first museum to be officially operated and maintained by the city of Tallahassee. Now therefore, I, John E. Daly, as mayor, along with my colleagues on the city commission, unanimously do hereby honor and reestablish the John G. Riley Center Museum as the John G. Riley Research Center and Museum, a division of the city of Tallahassee, so that generations of Tallahasseans will continue to have access to this important landmark and the invaluable resources it provides. Dated today, February 26, 2020, signed by me, John Daly, Mayor of Tallahassee. Ms. Barnes, it is my honor and privilege.
Mike Finnis.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. This is a marvelous day, one that we have been together, some of us, since inception, January 1st, 1996. And I promise I won't talk long, but I did want to, in the interest of Black History Month, read something that was brought to my attention. If the Atlantic were to dry up, it would reveal a scattered pathway of human bones marking the various routes of the Middle Passage. But those who did survive multiplied and have contributed to the creation of a new human society in the Americas. It is a testament to the vitality and fortitude of the Africans that 10 to 20 million lived through the Hanious Ordeal that many consider the greatest crime ever committed against a people in human history. Many years ago, ancestors of Samuel Wells survived the Middle Passage. Samuel ultimately ended up in Tallahassee through the slave trade, met and married Sarah, a descendant of the prominent Proctor family. To that union was born John Gilmore Riley, who went on to become the first African American principal of Lincoln School that served the black students here for 100 years, from 1869 to 1969. He was also a significant property holder, Grand High Presupergoria Ark Masons of Florida, a pillar of St. James CME Church just two blocks down the hill. And his house that we are now marrying in with the city of Tallahassee still stands, two blocks behind the Leon County Courthouse. So this act tonight provides that sustainability, that measure of capacity building that is needed to preserve legacies such as this. I'm pleased and thanks so much that we were able to negotiate this. It's been a beautiful prenuptial activity here. And we thank you so much. And I do just want to recognize these members because they are the wind beneath my wings. Jarvis is chairman of the John G. Riley Foundation Board and the property really belongs to the John G. Riley Foundation, so they will transfer it over along with the rest of us. And then we have our other board members, Magga Lewis Butler, Emma Hill, Katie McCormick, John Okuso Millison, I'm taking this time because they have been very valuable, Torio Osborne, Kim Williams, Annie Harris, who's chair of the museum board, Delmas Barber, Patricia Griffin, and, um, our attorney, our attorney from Halloween night, they've, they've helped us since 1999 to stay on track. And our staff person, education director, Paige Lee.
Yeah, what about me?
Now.
What about me?
Oh, that's right. And board member, Mayor John. And our good friend here, Dr. Aaron Myers, who's been volunteering with us for over 12, 15 years. Yep, thank you. And I must be have one, a new person, a visiting, not a new person, but
Good to judge. Good to see you, sir.
Judge George Reynolds. George George Reynolds was the first yard man for the Riley House in 1996. Because we didn't have any money.
And happy to do it.
So he and his sons kept the yard up. And then when we did the Greenwood Cemetery Restoration Project, he took a lead role. Every person that came before him to be sentenced, he sentenced them to Greenwood Cemetery. To work. Because the city, the city required us to bring it to a maintainable estate before they would take it over and raise $10,000 to get the overgrowth taken down. I would come from church on Sunday and I would see these people in Greenwood Cemetery and I said, "Well, who are those people?" Grew up in there, that was Judge Reynolds with the community service people chopping wood, chopping the grass and what have you. So thanks so much for being here. But everybody here, thank you all so much. We're gonna stay engaged and we promise you that the board will remain advisory. We will do all that we can to move the process along. I see Ms. Mary Wellington stepping in the door. She's a board member as well. Thank you so much, Mary. And we just want to say the prenuptial has been great and I guess the marriage is gonna take us even farther.
Absolutely. So will you organize this for a picture? So why don't we all, we're gonna try this, we're gonna try to squeeze in and get one picture. You stand right here for a second. While everybody is moving to get organized, and I'm gonna encourage all the board to please come and let's all try to, try to squeeze in. Ms. Barnes, let me just tell you, on a personal note and on behalf of the city of Tallahassee, we are here to graciously accept, obviously, the museum. We're gonna make you proud. We're gonna do a wonderful job and we will continue the legacy. But I think it's also important just a second. I also think it's important for us to take a second and recognize Ms. Altamis Barnes for her dedication to this community. All right, we are in recess until six o'clock. Please go to the floor for session. I can ask my colleagues to please come join me and ask senior staff to come grab your seat. It is six o'clock for the regularly scheduled public hearing. All right, we are on item number 15.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 15.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-0-05, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee updating the capital improvements element of the 2030 Tallahassee Leon County Comprehensive Plan, providing for severability and conflicts and provided an effective date.
Excellent. Do we have any speakers on this item, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
All right, I'm looking for Commissioner comment and direction.
Move, accept.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes 4-1 with Commissioner Richardson out of chambers. Item number 15.02, please.
Item number 15.02 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-0-07, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section 21-242, City of Tallahassee Code relating to implementation of a solar farm electric service rider, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and provided an effective date.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
We do not.
All right, I am looking for Commissioner comment, direction. It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes 4-0 with Commissioner Richardson out of chambers. Item number 15.03.
Item number 15.03 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-01, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as an end residential preservation one with historical preservation overlay on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission, adding a structure to the local register of historic places, providing for conflicts and for severability and provided an effective date.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Excellent. Commissioners, looking for direction and comment.
Move, accept.
Properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 15.04.
Item number 15.04, first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-Z-02, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, changing the zoning classification of land from residential preservation RP to Cambridge Park Plan Unit Development PUD, providing for conflict, severability, and an effective date.
All right, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we have two names. Robert Druck would be our first speaker.
Mr. Druck, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, yes, my name is Robert Druck. I reside at 4492 Hanson Quarters. So I'm not here to speak in opposition or support of the PUD, but I'm here to talk about how the city and Cambridge Park might actually be great partners in a project and on adjacent parcel. On some of you, we've talked to about this. But kind of right between my house and that PUD lie two parcels. Bordering those parcels is the old Lake Hall Schoolhouse.
Right.
And the Lake Hall Schoolhouse, for those who don't know, was built in 1870. It was for the children of freed slaves. That schoolhouse was in use, I believe, until around 1940 or so. It is the last such one-room schoolhouse for African American children that has neither been preserved nor destroyed. So we are kind of working hard to preserve that. The schoolhouse is actually in the county, so we're working hard with Leon County to do that. They're, they're working on an agenda item. We're working with the state parks because the Clay Gardens might be interested. We've talked to our state representatives as well. We even have National Park Service involved with their local officials are gonna try helping us get grant money for it. Where really the city might be helpful and Cambridge Park might be helpful is on those two adjacent parcels, one of them does border the Cambridge Park parcel. And what we're looking to do is the, the Leon County proposal we're trying to push for is to actually preserve that thing on site, the schoolhouse on site. There's a lot of historical value to that. The keeping it something on site, of course, preserves its historical integrity tremendously. However, also, you know, northeast Leon County is not the place lots of people think about as being the destination for African American history in Leon County. A lot of people consider it the white side of town. But there is so much rich African American history, particularly in our neighborhood, the Lake Hall neighborhood, which we're looking to highlight and preserve, you know, and bring people there. So we're kind of late to the game. We just started working on this less than a month ago, or a month and a half ago. So I know, I know it's kind of late to, you know, bother people about this kind of thing. But we're hoping to get the county to purchase those two parcels, one of which is adjacent to Cambridge Park. One of the biggest problems we're gonna face is access. So the, the property owner who owns the schoolhouse, she only wants to part with it if people are coming in from Thomasville Road as opposed to our kind of small little gravel dirt roads. And the infrastructure that Cambridge Park wants to put in place greatly to our benefit gets us like 90% of the way there. And so we're just trying to get on the record and hope that the city commission might be able to work with Cambridge Park, you know, to maybe amend that site plan, just, just to move, as, as they move through planning stages, just, just to get us maybe access onto that parcel.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Druck.
Commissioner Richardson. Brought this matter to my atten-, oh, I guess all of our attention, but I did respond and I, I forwarded that information to the city manager. I know that staff has been working with him to see if we can make it happen. But there's a lot of moving parts.
Yes.
In order to make it happen, but it's not contiguous, as you heard from staff, it's not contiguous to the PUD.
If I may, so, so the schoolhouse encroaches onto the property that is adjacent to the PUD. The property owner is, is property is south of it. That, that little, the section that the schoolhouse sits on is such a small segment that it wouldn't really be suitable for any sort of preservation, a visitable preservation or interpretation. So the, the proposal we're really pushing for the county is for them to, and we have gotten some positive feedback about this from the county, is to purchase those two parcels. But it is adjacent to the parcel that it approaches upon.
Okay. All right. Thank you for coming and thank you actually for your efforts in that. I, I, I don't know a whole lot about the Lake Hall Schoolhouse myself. I've heard about it and knew that it still existed out there, but thank you for your efforts in preserving that historic structure.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
We have one more speaker. Yeah, I think it's a cool project. I do.
The other mayor, other speaker we have on this item, Mayor, is Carmen Green, and maybe here for questions, but also obviously can speak for three minutes.
Hey, Ms. Green, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Carmen Green, I'm with Magnolia Engineering, 3551 Blairstone Road, Suite 128-275. Commissioners and Mayor, thank you for your presence tonight and the first thing I want to say is that planning staff has worked with us long and hard on this PUD concept. They have put forth a lot of good ideas. We've worked those ideas into our plan. We have a conservation of a strip along Thomasville Road that will buffer the project. We have interconnectivity through the preservation of green areas that will provide pedestrian paths in and around the development. We have a conservation easement along the western property boundary that encompasses the old Thomasville Road bed. the old Thomasville roadbed, and we have a community park. We're also providing interconnections to the north and the south. The community park is located near the interconnection to the south. I'm not sure exactly how these parcels lie or what the configuration is. I think the interconnection to the south could be useful. I think we could talk about a pedestrian interconnection through the community park. There is a old roadbed, like I said, the old Thomasville roadbed along the western property boundary that's in our conservation easement. There's a good four or five-foot drop-off there. So as far as accessing it across the roadbed, you know, we'd have to look at that, make sure it was safe for pedestrians, but we're certainly willing to sit down and talk about this matter in the future. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for cooperating with them in making that happen.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Great. Do we have any other speakers, Mr. Clerk?
Not on this item.
All right, I'm looking for direction, comment. Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, I just want to weigh in, and thank you, Robert, and to both of our speakers for their input. I do think it's an important project and happy to see the county working on it. From my understanding, all parties kind of agree if there's a solution that we can come together and find, we're open to do it. But obviously, the first step is finding out if someone's gonna purchase it and take the restoration project on hand. And as that moves forward, and if parcels around it, we'd be more inclined to know what we need to do, and we're at a point where we're not sure what we need to do, but I think everybody's willing to be helpful if we get there. And I'll move acceptance.
All right, Commissioner Matlow has probably moved staff recommendation, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. See no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Commissioner Richardson, you are out of chambers for 15.01 and 15.02.
I'd like to be shown as voting in the affirmative, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Let the record reflect on 15.01 and 15.02. Commissioner Richardson is in the affirmative.
Thank you.
Any questions, Madam Attorney, Mr. Clerk?
So noted.
Great. Do we have any other items come before us at the public hearing?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, do we have any other items come before this body this evening?
That concludes your agenda for tonight.
Okay, I think we have one or two colleagues. Not everybody realized that we were taking unadmitted speakers before the break. I think we have one or two extra cards. We're doing pretty well on time. Before we go to sharing of ideas, let's go ahead and hear from those members of the public. Mr. Clerk.
Janine Murray-Roman. And as you alluded to, Mayor, just as with our earlier speakers, each speaker at this point will have three minutes for remarks, and I'll give you a heads up when you get close to three.
Thank you. Your name and address for the record. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for your time. My name is Janine Murray-Roman, and I live at 1604 Branch Street. I wanted to come to this meeting to comment, to request that the city commission begin a formal process of examining the work done by city manager Reese Goode. I'm aware that Commissioner Matlow had begun the process by examining his record as part of last year's performance review and finding evidence of, I quote, "a culture of fear and intimidation in the city manager's office stemming from Mr. Goode's pattern of nepotism, favoritism, and unethical behavior." This came to my attention as a citizen because of the absence of transparency in the hiring of a new police chief, which, just as a reminder, you know, job processes are very complex things, but after the preferred candidate did not ultimately accept the position for various reasons, Lawrence Revelle was hired right around Christmas, the timing of which is almost farcical in its obviousness of manipulation, a kind of absence of transparency or responsiveness to community concern. Lawrence Revelle was a candidate whose record and career is very, has earned him the distrust of citizens of Tallahassee, and we deserve to have a longer process around this. Moreover, the outrageous way in which he was installed follows a pattern of mismanagement which parallels Mr. Goode's own hiring in a closed-door deal orchestrated by former Commissioner Maddox, who has since been indicted for corruption. So in Goode and Revelle, I am concerned to see two persons who have become accustomed to operating with impunity and who have been emboldened by the city commission's inaction on this matter. And I would request that you take up your mandate to oversee the people who are hired by the city manager and the city manager himself, to scrutinize persons who were installed in positions of power through illegitimate processes, and to ensure that these roles, which have such a crucial daily and material impact on the lives of Tallahassee citizens, be held by persons of integrity and talent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Mayor, the only other speaker we haven't heard from is Ernie Payne, and I'm assuming he's still tied up in another meeting, so I believe he'll miss his opportunity.
All right, let's go to the sharing of ideas. Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I know, and we had an opportunity to hear from you at unadmitted items. We are on commissioner comment. Mayor Pro Tem. The public hearing has been closed. We went through items 15.01 to 15.04. We heard from unadmitted business speakers prior to, and we just heard from the last that we have not had a chance to hear from. We are on commissioners to be heard. Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Madam Mayor Pro Tem, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind us of a great thing that this community did in coming together to help the Hartsfield Chorus get ready to go to Carnegie Hall. I went by last night and took some items from the city so they can represent us in New York. They will be leaving tomorrow morning, and they are performing on Sunday, and I am happy that the next commission meeting will be at Hartsfield. By that time, they will be back.
That's right.
And so I'm expecting to hear great things about their trip and what they did in New York. And I understand that there will be some Facebook laving. I don't know if anyone's gonna be videotaping, but I suggest that we look for them so that we can cheer them on. This is really a big deal for them, and this community came together to make this happen, and I'm just really pleased to be a part of doing something significant like that. So congratulations, Tallahassee, congratulations, Hartsfield Elementary School, congratulations to the Chorus, and Godspeed to the children and the chaperones and teachers and the principal that's traveling with them as they go take on New York.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson.
And if I just add, this is, was the second time, actually, they had been invited to go to Carnegie Hall. The first time, they weren't able to come up with the finances, and so, yeah, this is really exciting for the parents, the students, and the school. And I want to commend Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tem, Williams Cox, for all the work that she put into helping make that happen. Thank you so much.
And Commissioner Richardson, do you have a floor? Anything else?
No, I didn't have anything.
Excellent. Dr. Bryant, Commissioner Bryant.
I want to pile on. Because that is exactly what I wanted to talk about, and I am, I have committed to be up at 4:00 a.m. in the morning to go help prepare breakfast so that those young people will leave on the plane nice and full.
That's great.
And I think that as a part of this community, we really have to be proud that they are making that trip to New York. I certainly am.
Absolutely. Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, I have two items. The first, I had a gentleman come to my office hours about the need to expand baby-changing stations and men's restrooms. Dads change diapers, too, what was his message? And there's cities around the state who are looking at, you know, new developments, large-scale, making sure they supply them. I think the majority of city facilities I've visited already do supply them, but I think it would be nice to check. I think we have one or two that may not have them in men's rooms, but also look at seeing how we can work that in for newer developments coming online, if they would supply baby-changing stations in men's rooms as well.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Well, I think we have them in all facilities, but can we double check?
We will check.
That's a great idea. Yeah, Commissioner Matlow.
Commissioner Matlow, before you leave that, I wanted to add, I did share that information with the city manager. When we had our briefing the other day, it totally slipped my mind, so thank you for bringing it up. But I did share that information with him and asked him to have the attorney take a look at it and see how we can move forward. I do think it's something that we certainly should look at, because there are a lot of dads who, you know, I had two daughters, and when I would take them to the mall or other places when they were young, I mean, there was no place in the restroom for me to be able to change them. And so it presents a hardship for the dads in that respect. So I think for us to take a look at it would be a good thing. And Commissioner Matlow, thank you for raising that issue for us.
Floor is yours.
Great, thank you. And then the second issue, I just want to put, you know, my opinion on the record. There's been a lot of debate about the ethics office. We have an old ethics officer. We've had two new ethics officers, and there's this big conversation about it. We heard a speaker earlier, and to me, those are their decisions to make, but one thing, I think strongly, I think we should essentially demand for the public is that they do be televised. People have grown accustomed to watching those on WCO T. I think we have the ability, and there's a reason we have the station, so wherever they may, they may land, I think is largely up to them, but I think they should be televised, and we should make a statement saying that if you're gonna have meetings, they should be televised and recorded for the public.
Mayor Pro Tem.
One more thing. Congratulations to my aide, Dr. Davis' daughter, who has been selected to be one of the five young ladies to watch by the Tallahassee Democrats.
All right.
Congratulations to Cameron Davis, and she also received an award. She is a student at McClay for weightlifting. So someone told, somebody said tonight, she's a triple threat. She's smart, she's pretty, and she's strong. So yay, Cameron.
All right.
There you go.
All right, I have nothing. We stand adjourned.[1755.65]